I'd like to call the order of the March 6, 2012 meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. I invite you to rise as Commissioner Slim Nash leads us into invocation.
Please bow your heads with me. Dear Lord, we are thankful for this day that you have given us for its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. We ask particular blessings on those Kentuckians and Hoosiers affected by last week's storms and tornadoes. Please also keep those willing to risk their own lives and freedom to protect ours. Please keep them safe and out of harm's way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Sheldon, please call the roll.
Commissioner Denny.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here.
Mr. DeFebbe, we have awards and recognitions tonight. Start with Operation Pride.
Okay. Mayor, Commissioners, this evening, the Pride Award is a commercial award that goes to the Bowling Green Technical College at 1845 Luke Drive. And the good thing about having the Technical College recommended for the award and then receiving the award is they did their own PowerPoint presentation. So I'm going to show you their PowerPoint presentation tonight, probably a little bit better than mine. Here is the before of the courtyard. This is an after. Here is the before of the walkway. An aftershock of the walkway. Here is the before of the courtyard again. And after. And the front of the building before. The front of the building after. The path to the parking area before. The path to the parking area after. The front of the campus before. The front of the campus after. The overflow parking area before. And take a look at this photo. The overflow parking area after. The new parking spaces before.
Wow.
The new parking spaces after. And that is the PowerPoint presentation. As you can see, this is why it was recommended. And I will tell you that these photographs don't even do it justice. When I went out to give them the sign that we put in front of the area for residency yard and for businesses, the area around there, it was amazing. You know, and I'm like, so where do I go? And they're like, Building H. And I got a big H there, and it tells you exactly where to go. So not only is the area been done, but the organization is great. And tonight, I have Donna Martin here from the organization to accept the award.
On behalf of President Nathan Hodges and the faculty and staff of Bowling Green Technical College, I want to thank you for this award.
Thank you so much.
That's all I have. I appreciate you all allowing me to present this tonight. And just to let you know, our last section of fence, Section D, in front of the liquor store at the Highway 446 Louisville Spur Road, we're going to start on it next week. So we've got that fourth quadrant section coming in, so appreciate you all helping with that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waltrip. Appreciate it.
Ray, I would just like to say the bar has been set now for PowerPoint presentations.
And I used to have PowerPoint warriors that worked for me, but I'll have to go to the school and learn how to do that a little bit better, but thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of awards and recognitions to bring up. First is Master Police Officer Mitchell Walker has left our employment. After many years of service, he retired at the end of February. Mitch was a Burksville native and came to work with us, one of the last, I believe, that I was involved in hiring. And as Billy would say, I knew he wouldn't last, right?
I knew he wouldn't last.
Wish him well and congratulate him. And then, next, the Department of Housing and Urban Development's Louisville Field Office, in conjunction with the Kentucky Housing Authority, has recognized Bowling Green's Section 8 Funding Program over this past year. It's a, I guess, Section 8 Program of the Year, it's called. We had a leasing rate of over 99 and 1/2 percent, and amongst that, we provided over $2.6 million of rental assistance to qualified families. But I'm sure as part of that program, it recognizes how efficient and effective we are, not only providing those services, but using those funds well. So we want to thank Mr. Childers. I don't believe he's here tonight, but there he is. Right in the front row. All of them are here. Do you have anything you want to add to it? Help me explain what it is.
I'll give a brief overview. This is it, and we're going to actually place it in our offices tomorrow, so you know everybody can see it. And kind of what this is, is this was presented at the KHA Midyear Conference, last two weeks ago now, in Lexington. And this is just a recognition of our utilization of those funds. So you know, we start the year with a pot of money, and the goal is to get as close to zero as you can at the end of the year and still provide a level of service. And we did that, and we're pleased with that. And I want to thank Alvera for all of her work. Without her, this would not have been possible. But thank you all.
Congratulations. Any other awards or recognitions, Mr. DeFebbe? City manager comments?
Yeah, I have four items. Couple business items. With your courtesy, I'd like to pull number 13 from the agenda based on our discussions at the work session. Do we need a vote on that, Kate? Second, I think there'll be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reasons.
Pursuant to KRS 61810B, "Four deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of a specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city." And KRS 61810G, "Discussions between the city and representative of a business entity in discussions concerning a specific proposal if open discussions would jeopardize the siting, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the businesses."
Motion by Waltrip, second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Mayor, two other items. First, I'd like to thank all the employees and department heads who prepared last Friday for the storms that, thank God, never hit Bowling Green, but I just want to acknowledge all their hard work and preparation just in case something would happen. I think we have been well-served by our employees and our department heads organizing for the event. They should be acknowledged for that. Finally, I'd like to use part of my time to have Doug Hawkins come up briefly, in quotes, "to talk about the 100 megahertz radio system." As I know you all know, maybe the public doesn't, the key to public safety, especially during an emergency, is communication. And the center point, the nexus of that communication system, is the radio system. We've been living essentially with a radio system that was acquired, used back in 1997, has only one tower, and has essentially outlived its life. Over the last couple of years, there's been efforts by a variety of different participants to try to bring this to a conclusion. In collaboration with our partners in the county, we put together a small team to try to bring this need to a conclusion. On that team were Doug Hawkins, Greg Johnson, Steve Smith, and our EMS coordinator, Ronnie, who worked on it. We're here tonight to recommend what will be the first step in bringing that important radio system to a conclusion over the next year. Doug is going to lay out for you how the, what the timeframe is and what the parts, incumbent parts of that process is. It's also be important to note that this is, in addition to us watching the budget, this is our second top priority for the year. So I asked Doug to come up.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Commissioner, Mayor's, I'm sorry, reverse that. Mayor, Commissioners.
I kind of liked the way you said it.
Only for you, Slim.
Thank you.
As Mr. DeFebbe said, back in 2011, having provided this commission and both the Fiscal Court with a great deal of information with our current radio system, you all saw the wisdom to appoint the four of us as an oversight committee, a work group, to work on developing a new radio, a new project. And we have done that. We have met as a team a number of times with the help of Jennifer Portman, our purchasing manager for the city, and this work group, and a lot of input from information we've gathered. We did develop an RFP for a radio consultant. We knew going into this that it was going to be important to have a radio consultant assist us in moving forward on this project. We took that responsibility very seriously because we thought that identifying the right consultant would put us on the right path to success on this project. So we developed the RFP, sent it out in November, advertised that in November of 2011, received, I think, 10 responses from that. Those 10 responses were evaluated. After we got the 10 responses, then we sent out an additional questionnaire to all of the, those companies that submitted a response to the RFP. We received nine back. One chose to withdraw from the process at that point with their failure to submit responses to the follow-up questionnaire. After evaluating those nine, based on a series of criteria, then we asked for, the four who scored best, we asked them to come and do in-person interviews and do a presentation for us and have a discussion with us on questions that we felt were important to ask them and to get answers to. Having gone through that process, which was a fairly lengthy and extensive process, we have selected Federal Engineering. We feel like they are the best qualified company. They have a great deal of experience. They weren't selected for this reason, but frankly, it will help us in the process, we believe. They also were the company that worked with BGMU to help them recently put in a radio system for their own purposes. It's a smaller system, but in a lot of ways, it's a very similar system. Ours is just going to be an expanded version of what BGMU has worked on. So we feel like that they already have some local experience and some information that will help them move forward on that project. Now, as far as the timeline moving forward, we're looking at about three to six months for RFP development. The consultants will come in, they will interview all of the users, the interested users in this system that we represent the majority of. They will define what the new radio system needs to look like in order to meet our needs. They will help us through that process, then design, do a preliminary design on the system, develop an RFP that we can then send out to radio vendors, Motorola, Harris, those kinds of companies that specialize in building radio systems. We think that that will take about six months to do all of that and to get the responses back for the RFP, for the radio system. And their best estimate, once the contract is signed for a radio system vendor, is about 18 months to actually build the system, to get it in place, and to make it operational. So from today, we're estimating about a two-year project to get, from today to an end result where we have a working multi-tower redundant radio system that will replace, excuse me, replace our current system.
You want to reduce the team, please?
I would. And I think we're all here today if they'll stand up. We have Ronnie Pearson, who is the Emergency Management Director. We have Tommy Smith, who's the Chief Deputy for the Warren County Sheriff's Office, Fire Chief for the City of Bowling Green, Greg Johnson, and myself, Chief Doug Hawkins of the Police Department. Any questions that I might be able to answer?
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're at the point where we're at the approval of the minutes for the February 7, 2012 meeting. So moved? So moved by Mr. Nash, second by Waltrip. Please call the roll.
Denny.
I abstain.
Hill.
Abstain.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. And those abstentions were related to the fact that they were not here for the last meeting. Let's see, we now have time for public comments. If anyone in the audience would like to step forward and comment on any item not on tonight's agenda, please feel free to step up to the microphone. If you would identify yourself and address and give us your comments.
All right. My name's Mike Montgomery. I live at 1605 Bernard Way, Nets in the City. If I was to bring you a business that had $25 million in wages, that had 800 employees that made $30,000 annually, you'd be interested, wouldn't you? You'd want the best knowledge possible. You'd want the best analysis possible to do that work, to get that business. Well, a few weeks ago, you voted on the privatization of the golf courses. And that equates to the numbers I just gave you. I had to, I looked at the analysis that was done. I got the same package that you all got, Mr. Wilkerson provided for me. And I got to be honest with you. It was poorly done. It was not under any acceptable levels. It was short on facts, short on analysis, and long on opinion. Now, why can I say that? Why am I an expert? Why am I seen up here criticizing? Well, let's look at my resume. I have a master's in business. I'm a certified public accountant. I've taught at Western and at Belmont concerning these issues. I have been an expert witness. And more importantly, I've spent 25 years of my career doing this type of analysis. So I think I know what I'm talking about when I see good analysis versus bad analysis. Now, why? What am I going to do about it, other than just simply complain, which isn't right? I'm going to offer the city something. I'm going to offer, and I will do at no charge, I will lead, or assist, or consult the team to do a proper analysis, so that you all can make a decision that impacts the taxpayers. Why am I doing this? As some of you know, some of you don't, I'm a tax accountant. I see how hard the taxpayers of this community work. And when I see analysis like this, that's been done, that you had to make decisions on, I don't think you're being fair to the taxpayers. You can take that 800 employees that we're talking about and switch them. 800 taxpayers were made by this decision. 800 taxpayers. I know you guys want to do the right thing. You've said it all along. You want to do what's right by the taxpayers. Well, I'm giving you a chance. No charge. I have the expertise. You can check my resume, and I will do this, and I will assist you, so that you can have the information to make an informed, correct decision. Let me make a couple of points clear here. I do not know Mr. Gary. If Mr. Gary's in the audience, I wouldn't know him. My firm has no connections with Mr. Gary. Know nothing about him. I don't, I'm not worried about the decision one way or another. What I'm worried about is that you all have the proper analysis, so that you can make a decision. So the decision's up to you. If you want to go forward, if you want to take care of the taxpayer, as you often said, and I've heard it from each one of you, I want to do what's right by the taxpayer, then you'll take me up on the offer. If not, I think that speaks volumes. One other item I'd like to bring out, and this has nothing to do with the offer I just had. While I was going through the analysis, I noticed that the city employees and retirees get half off on their golf. You're running deficits. Those two organizations, a four-year average of $448,000. Yet you have in your policies where the employees and retirees get half off the fees. Do you think that's right? How can you look at the taxpayer that's struggling and say, "I get half off, you don't"? And beyond that, it'd be different if you all were making a profit. The golf division, by your own records, is going to lose, next year is budgeted, $1.6 million. Yet we have half off our golf for employees and retirees. I don't think it's right. I think you need to assess how that looks to the average taxpayer that works darn hard for the tax money. So I have to say, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. I appreciate you coming and making your comments. We will pass that information on to Mr. DeFebbe. Any other public comments? We'll begin with Municipal Order Number 2012-26.
Municipal Order Approving the Reappointment of Pat C.T. Sloan to the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport Board.
So moved. Second. Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Comment your questions. Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2012, number 27.
Municipal Order Approving the Appointment of Mary Ann Johnson to the Bowling Green Fire Department Burn Victim Fund Board of Advisors.
So moved. Second. Motion by Waltrip, second by Denny. Any discussion? I don't think she's any kin to Chief Johnson.
No, no.
Neighbor, though, right?
Neighbor.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2012, number 28.
Municipal Order Approving the Probationary Appointments of Amanda J. Hamilton, Margaret A. Muchmore, and Ashley L. Remington to the Position of Communications Dispatcher in the Police Department.
So moved. Second. Motion by Nash, second by Denny.
One of the more difficult positions to fill in the city government is that of communications dispatcher. It's a high-stress position with a lot of responsibility. We generally have open positions in that department. Recently, we had three. We went out to a solicitation. We had 64 applicants. Interesting enough, only 29 showed up for the test, of which 25 passed or were already pre-certified. We go through a polygraph, and of those, 25, 16, took it, 10 after that process were done, were given a background check, and seven were interviewed. And we're here tonight after distilling down the applicants to these three applicants. Melissa is here if you have any questions, or Chief Hawkins, if you want to ask about these individuals.
I believe you're present with us this evening. You would be kind enough to stand so that we can make sure everybody knows who you are. Ashley, Peg, and Amanda, right? Thank you.
Mayor, do they know, do they already know their 10 codes?
We don't use them anymore, Joe.
We don't use 10 codes?
No, we went to plain language. You can blame that on Hawkins, I think, or Hawkins, I think.
Because whenever I see something right on the street, and I call the police department, I let them know if it's 1045 or 1046, you know? And sometime, they'll come back and ask me, "Is anybody hurt?"
Yep. Every time. Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-29.
Municipal Order Approving a Contract Through Non-Competitive Negotiations with Motorola Solutions Incorporated of Schaumburg, Illinois, under the Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the Purchase of Mobile Radios for the Police Department in the Amount of $51,728.96.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbe?
Tonight, we're going to be talking about the radio system. Part of that overall radio system is the handheld devices that our police officers and firemen use. We're here tonight to take advantage of approximately a $52,000 grant from Homeland Security as part of our ongoing effort to upgrade our radios to a digital platform. With these grant funds, we're able to purchase 17 new radios for the Police Department.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-30.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Accepting Proposal from Federal Engineering from Fairfax, Virginia, for Public Safety Wireless Communications Consultant in the Amount of $77,700.
So moved. Motion by Waltrip, second by Denny.
I don't think I need to add to any of the comments that I made earlier, or Chief Hawkins, about this purchase, but as we all agreed, it's an important one for the city, especially to protect citizens. The weather event Friday caused us all to pause, hoping that our one tower would not be taken down. But we wholeheartedly recommend approval of this, and I want to thank the two from the county and two from the city who were able to distill what was a long, ongoing debate about where we should go with radios into this simple recommendation. I want to personally thank them for doing their job.
All right, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Next is first reading of ordinance BG 2012, number three.
Ordinance Relating to Classification Pay Schedule. Ordinance Amending the Classification Pay Schedule G for General Classified Employees for Fiscal Year 2012 to Add the Classification of Executive Assistant.
So moved. Second, motion by Nash and second by Waltrip.
As you know, we have been always, in our effort to achieve our number-one goal, watch the budget. When opportunity arrives to consolidate our staffing and make greater use of skill, we do that. Tonight, we're here to basically take and combine what used to be a secretary to the chief, as well as a payroll person into one position. This will save us approximately $48,000 by combining this. I think we've done this over 20 times, or eliminated or repackage some variety of positions. This is, again, another one. I want to thank the chief for thinking outside the box. It was his recommendation, not one that I placed on him, so I want to thank him for thinking this way.
How much will this save the taxpayers?
$48,000.
$48,000. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's Chief Hawkins.
Hawkins.
If I could, just for a moment, Mr. DeFebbe.
Yes.
It relates to this. You and I had spoken previously, and I wondered if there's going to be any work session that's going to be upcoming on the amount of money that the city has been able to carve out of the budget during your tenure here at the City of Bowling Green.
If you would like that, I...
Well, I think we deal with so many issues like this, where we're talking about $48,000, and it's one issue, that it's easy to, oh, I don't know, become arrogant, I suppose, might be the word that I would use, in not recognizing the amount of money that has been saved by the city under many of the efforts that you've put in place.
Whatever you want. I'll do whatever you want. I planned to...
I plan to give you the yearly update from 2011, what this company accomplished, but I'd be happy to give you otherwise.
I'd like to see, obviously, I'm only one of five, but since it relates to saving money, which this issue does, I'd like to see something more of a total package than just this past year.
I would second that. It's easy to carve out one issue, or one thing, and try to make a dramatic stand over it. But I would like to see that showing that we are good stewards of our money, of the taxpayers' money, I should say.
Just anecdotally, you can absorb a major recession, cut your tax rate, add the ballpark, add the ITA, and continue to provide services if we're not doing something.
When did you plan to do your yearly update?
Well, the department heads, senior managers, department heads, are tomorrow to give me their final, "What have you done for us lately?" report, and then I was going to send it to you in the next couple of weeks. We can do that in a formal thing. I'd just been kinda sub rosa about it, never made a big deal of it. But if that's important, we can do that.
It's important to me.
Be all right to combine them?
As long as we get the information, again, to show that we don't just haplessly sit up here and deal with taxpayers' money and not think through the items. And I think that would be good for everyone to see what pains have been taken to, again, be good stewards of taxpayers' money.
At risk of making us all sound defensive, just alone in tonight's agenda, you're saving $48,000 in this move. Jeff is saving you $700,000 in refinancing, not something that was, came from anyone else, but from the mind of Jeff. Of that $700,000, we have the first-down payment on reducing golf debt, got about $35,000 of that, 'cause the refinancing reduced the debt service at Riverview. We're just gonna continue to work tomorrow and just continue to do what we're supposed to do without adding to that. Is that all right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you. Are we ready to call the roll?
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2012-31.
Municipal order approving and authorizing out-of-town travel expenses for city manager Kevin D. DeFebbe to attend the Kentucky League of Cities City Day, City Night, and Kentucky City County Management Association 2012 Winter Conference in Frankfurt, Kentucky.
Second. Motion by Denning and second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2012-32.
Municipal order approving and accepting litter abatement funding from the Kentucky Energy and Environment Cabinet and approving an agreement between the city of Bowling Green and Warren County Fiscal Court for litter abatement activities.
So moved. That motion by second, or excuse me, by Nash, second by Waltrip. Any discussion, Mr. DeFebbe?
You're the sponsor. I can give a little overview, if you'd like.
Go right ahead.
Okay. We were able to receive a $20,000 grant in the city's name. Oftentimes, it doesn't come to the city, but is usually a mixture between us and the city. But this year, we were able to get it. With Bruce's help, we thought it was important to partner with the county, again, to use part of this money, approximately $11,000, to aid Jackie Stroden to cover some of his costs to help pick up litter within the city. Again, it's another partnership we have with the county, and...
That's a story. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Next is first reading of BG ordinance 2012-4.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number two to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbe?
As we all know from the retreat, watching our budget is our number-one priority. We do this under your authority to approve any changes in the operating budget through amendment. You'll see in your packet the reasons why we need to amend the budget. A number of those are for bringing in new money through grants, or for changes that we have made in other funds. For example, we recently had a problem with the wedding chapel at the cemetery, the block chapel? That's the proper way to say it. So we wanna reflect that in here. Jeff, do you wanna add anything?
Kevin mentioned, just some of these were new revenues. Some are needing, need some spending for capital. We're using fund balance. And then a lot of it's house cleaning, just like the litter abatement grant we just approved. It's in here appropriating that money for the county's $11,000. And we had to increase the budget, the appropriations for the TIF distribution we recently made. So this is kind of a cleanup item for that. And other than that, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2012, number 33.
Municipal order declaring 1988 Pierce-Arrow fire apparatus to be surplus property and approving its donation to the Bowling Green campus of the Kentucky Community Technical College System.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbe?
Our fire department, like other departments, is driven by a need for improving technology. We always try to get the best and most efficient equipment we need to fight fires. In our inventory, we had a piece of equipment that has long since passed its usefulness, but it's well-maintained by our own employees. We went out, as required by law, and put it on bid on a gov deals and see if we can collect any money. After all, it's an asset that the citizens paid for. We only received one bid of $5,500. Greg, in collaboration with Dr. Hotches, come up with the idea that we should possibly donate it, with your courtesy, to the Kentucky Tenth Hall College. They have a program there in fire science that is sort of a farm system for a number of our firefighters. It would be nice in their training protocol to have a real fire truck to understand how to translate academic learnings to real-life learning. So Greg is asking you tonight to donate that to the community college. Knowing how mindful you are of grip-and-grin opportunities, Greg's gonna set up a handoff of the fire truck, a public relations event. So that'll be sometime in the future. But tonight, we wanna donate this to the college, if you're okay with it.
I thought Donna was gonna drive it home. I didn't know she's here. I think it's a wonderful opportunity, both for the community college and for the city. Anybody ever had any comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Next is the first reading of ordinance BG 2012, number five.
Ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds and ordinance of the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of one, city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation refunding bond, Series 2012A, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $6,665,000 for the purpose of refunding a portion of the outstanding city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation bonds, Series 2004A, and two, city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2012B, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,525,000 for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of the outstanding city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, general obligation bond, Series 2004B, taxable, the proceeds of which in turn finance the cost of the acquisition, construction, and installation of various public projects in the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky. Approving forms of bids, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchasers for the purchase of the bonds following the advertised sale of the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
I didn't quite understand all of it. Will you repeat that?
That's just the summary. So moved. Motion by Nash?
Second.
Second by Hill. Mr. DeFebbe?
One of our goals always in watching the budget is to watch what we pay for the use of money in the form of interest, because money is not free to use other people's money. I think this is, since I've been here, this is, I think, the third time that Jeff has felt it important in his watching the cost of money to report to us. He thinks that we could save money by refinancing bonds that were issued back in 2004. This allows us to save approximately $800,000 over the life alone by refinancing. It's interesting that $35,000 of which would go to refinancing of our debt on Riverview, but it's a small, it's like the first-down payment on saving costs at the golf course. But I wanna congratulate Jeff for keeping his eye on the ball, and I think it's a good move for us. And $800,000 is $800,000. We recommend your approval. Jeff, if you wanna add anything?
The fact that we couldn't, I wish we could've done the whole thing, but we couldn't. The savings wasn't as good because of the fact, we talked about the bank-qualified money before. We gave some of that to BGU. I could kick myself for doing that, but...
We didn't give them the money. We gave them our capacity.
The capacity, you're right. We didn't give them money. We gave them that allocation, I guess you'd call it, of our $10 million bank-qualified money. But we're still saving quite a bit of money here. So I thought this was a good thing. And I can't take credit for being the mastermind totally of this. Morgan Keegan helps me kinda monitor things. But we feel this is a good thing, and we appreciate your support.
It doesn't extend the life of the debt.
It does not. I actually looked at shortening the 2004B series, and it was gonna add quite a bit of debt service. Didn't feel like we wanted to tackle that. So we're gonna just ride the thing out till, as its original maturity was in 2024, and just capture the savings.
Any questions, comments?
It's a good time to borrow money. We just don't wanna borrow any new money, so...
Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
And municipal order 2012-34.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive fund, employee withholdings credit agreement with Holly Performance Products Incorporated.
So moved. Motion by Denning, second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe?
One of the questions that often gets bannished about is what does the city do to help business or foment economic development? In addition to, as you know, backboning the debt on the ballpark, sharing half the bond cost of the ITA with the county, providing incentives for new businesses through the CBG program, as well as giving the EDA seed money for its marketing. We alone provide, through the job development incentive, approximately 1% of 1.85 of the money we receive from new businesses who ask for the incentive. In 2011, we have financed approximately 10 different incentives for 10 different businesses. This, we've given up or foregone approximately $2.9 million over the 10-year period to help create new jobs in the city. Tonight, we're here to approve what would be the 10th incentive. This will provide 136 new jobs. Will be given up, again, 1% of 1.85 that we would receive. This is over a 10-year period. The amount that we are ceding would be approximately $408,000 over the life alone. But anyone who's served on that committee, and I know you all think that it's important for us to take the leadership role in economic development,